Welcome to the council chambers on 10 West State Street, July 8th, 2019 at 5:30. The mayor and the city council welcome and comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items. You're required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and to limit your time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order that others may be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any councilor specifically. It is the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask you to stand up and join the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Time now, oral call.
Isom.
Here.
Lemar.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weren's absent Cahill.
Here.
Gotti's absent Hoop.
Here.
Thank you.
It's be the time for the mayor, councilor, administrator comments. I'd like to start off with good. We had a great event out here on State Street Saturday. There were hundreds and hundreds of people that put that together, and if you tried to list everybody, you'd forget somebody, so I'm just going to say thanks to everybody. And a special shout out to the Bobcat baseball team who showed up at 7:30 and unloaded all that equipment for the stage, and it was a sight to see, so. Anybody else?
I think we need to send a thank you to the Fourth of July Celebration Committee. I think they did a heck of a job. I really appreciated all the work they put into that.
I would like to, if we could, have just a moment, but we lost another one of our Marshalltown children today, and I want to give blessings out to Jasmine and her family, but also I want us to recognize all of the first responders, the police, the sheriff's department, everyone else who searched and who was part of this investigation as it continues. I think, again, we need to take care of our own and make sure that those people get what they need as we move forward, so if we could just have just a moment of silence, I'd appreciate Thank you.
I have none.
I'd like to motion to have the consent agenda approved.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
And what do you, who had to vote on it?
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Would you please read it?
Yes, Your Honor. Approve the city council minutes of June 24, June 27, and the bill list of $1,657,840.63. Resolution accepting awarding the bid for providing salt for ice and snow control in the amount of $81.45 per ton. Resolution ordering construction of the Anson Park project. Resolution approving city fees. Resolution declaring certain property surplus and authorizing sale and disposal of 1978 K Spaco and the hydraulic paving breaker. Resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2019 K end loader for the price of $146,500. Resolution ordering construction of the water pollution control plant, concrete repair Phase III project. Resolution authorizing the city to request assignment of certain tax certificates held by Marshall County following the public nuisance tax sale. Approve renewal tree trimmer license for top-notch tree service. And that would be it, Your Honor.
Move down to motions then. Would you read that, please?
Approve Vaughn's liquor license at 3700 South Center Street for July 19 event.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
I'll second.
Do we have anybody to talk about, or just?
From what I understand, College and Vaughn's Pub have a lease agreement with the Iowa Valley to host an event on July 19th, and Vaughn's has applied for a five-day beer permit.
I believe the event is the Times Republicans Pride and Progress Dinner and banquet.
Okay. Any other, any public comment? Call for a vote then.
Martin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move down to reports. Would you read the first one, please?
Your Honor, we don't have any reports.
Oh, excuse me. The first resolution then, please.
Resolution approving contract change order number two for the 2018 micro-surfacing project for general supplies for foreigner asphalt sealers, increase of $18,781.05.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk just read, this is for the change order to finalize our quantities for our micro-surfacing project on Third Street and Sixth Street. The total does come to about $18,781 on a original bill of, I think, close to $400,000 was the original bid, so we did a pretty good job, in my opinion, of sticking pretty close to the quantities. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding the change order, and then if there are none or when we're done with that, I was going to quickly go over for the public's purpose, what the purpose of a micro-surface is versus a traditional mill and overlay, so any questions I can answer.
If you'd like to vote on it before he says anything.
I would allow him to do the presentation here for you real quick, yeah.
So, micro-surfacing is a protective seal coat which extends the life of the pavement. It is a thin, tough layer of asphalt blended with emulsion to and crushed and finely crushed stone for the purposes of sealing and lengthening the life of a street. So you can see here a really close-up of how thin the asphalt is over an existing road. It is not the same as a mill and overlay, and as such probably will not achieve the smoothness that we've heard some comments about, but I would then show this next picture, which is our actual project here in Marshalltown. We did go ahead and seal cracks, we leveled dips around cracks, so I would answer to the public that this road is at least as smooth as it was prior to, if not smoother than before. I just don't have these statistics at the moment to back that up, but certainly would be willing to verify that it's at least as smooth. Here's an example, again, from our project overhead, showing how thin this asphalt layer, this micro-surface layer is, and then from the internet got a picture of a traditional mill and overlay, and so you can see that the asphalt overlay is more on the order of two, three, four inches thick, is going to give you a smoother ride because of a thicker layer that you're putting down. So, wanted the public to know that from the engineer's opinion, the micro-surfacing that we did on Third, Sixth Streets served its purpose for exactly what we wanted. It seals up that, those cracks, it seals up the surface of that road to try and keep water from penetrating, freezing and thawing, and thus deteriorating that pavement at a faster pace. I would admit that it probably doesn't look as pretty as I would like, but I did drive on Highway 30 heading west, west of Ames, I believe it was in Boone County, and it is not significantly different than a micro-surfacing I saw on Highway 30 that the DOT accepted. In my opinion, that we got the product that we paid for. Engineering-wise, it certainly will stand the test of time. Aesthetically, it may not look quite as pretty as some people might like, but be happy to answer any questions on the difference between a micro-surface and an asphalt overlay.
So, maybe for the public's and my knowledge, I guess, what's the difference, my cost comparison between doing a full overlay versus micro-surfacing, and then in addition to that lifespan from one to the other?
So, in general, I would say a mill and overlay as compared to a micro-surface is probably going to be on the order of about three times more expensive to mill and overlay just because of the amount of product, amount of asphalt and oil that you're purchasing as opposed to that micro-surfacing. We have hopes that this micro-surfacing would keep the measure of how, what equality that street is up for anywhere from, let's say, five, seven, 10 years, probably seven is what we would hope, but we'll obviously be watching our reports that we get on an every other year basis from the Iowa DOT to see how that street stands the test of time now that we've, now that we micro-surfaced it.
Is there any public comment on this?
Justin, you said that it'll last five, seven, 10 years. What's the difference in like repairs when they are due, like how to fill them, pothole fillable, you know, me and my pothole comment, so just curious on how easy it is to fix if there is an issue.
There really wouldn't be any changes from how you would fix a traditional mill and overlay. My hope is that by sealing the surface that there will be less potholes, but again, we'll have to see over the test of time if that's the case. The City of Marshalltown has utilized micro-surfacing in the past. Any of the streets that you'll notice that have a red tint to them were micro-surfaced before my tenure, probably six, eight years ago. In my opinion, those stand up pretty well as long as they are micro-surfaced over a road underneath that wasn't too far gone before, so. Some streets, and especially knowing the question and who asked it, of her street probably shouldn't have chosen this product when we did it in the past, but then there's other streets I can think of that have stood the test really well. One of them, I think, being State Street right out here, that has taken that product and made it last for, I believe, eight, maybe even 10 years now.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll, please.
Cahill.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Would you read Resolution Two, please?
Resolution to adopt updated standard specifications for sanitary sewer work, storm sewer construction, street excavation and pavement restoration, and sidewalks and driveways.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. One of the immediate benefits of having a greater staff in engineering is my new professional engineer, Jay Cook, took the time to look through all of our standard specifications for these different types of work. Took the time to look through SUDOS, which is the state urban design manual that the Iowa DOT and the Iowa State University and many communities use, look at the Iowa DOT specs, and to rewrite and update all of our standard specifications. He didn't do this in a vacuum. He worked through with our new sewers, or our one-year-plus new sewer superintendent, our new street superintendent, making sure that he worked with all of our staff to review what he had written, and then I took a look through what he had written, and it's nice to have some updated standard specifications. I believe the majority of them were last approved in 2006, so it's been a good decade plus and an excellent product that we will now have and hopefully be back to renew on an annual basis or at least a much more frequent basis than we have in the last 10 to 15 years. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Justin, give me an overview of the big items that you changed.
I don't think there were any big items that changed, kind of a lot of little specs, making sure that we're following SUDOS as much as we want to. We take exceptions to SUDOS where we can. We talked about using a different kind of sanitary sewer pipe than we have in the past. Our former sewer superintendent was pretty married to one type of pipe. The new sewer superintendent's a little more open. We talked about what other communities are using around Iowa, what they're using around the Midwest, making sure that we, we've had talks about five-foot sidewalks, getting that included in our new standard specifications, looking at the type of storm sewer pipe we use and whether we should be using gasketed concrete pipe, things like that, just making sure that we aren't standing alone in the state in what we require, but also not following blindly what other communities are doing.
Okay.
There weren't any major renovations, in my opinion.
Okay, thanks.
Justin, does the adoption of this in any way put the enforcement of these at a higher priority? And I'm thinking specifically of sidewalks and driveways, that just that, you know, that's something we've discussed before, and we probably discussed it last before the tornado, and I know many homes who have sidewalks that need fixing also, still have parts of their homes that need fixing, such as my own, as a matter of fact, but, so I just wondered if this will bring a higher priority to the enforcement of it.
I think it will help us in our enforcement. Does it actually focus anything further of enforcement? My answer would be no. We will make sure that these new specifications get into the hands of contractors out in the community so that they know what those changes are, but as far as enforcement of what's going on within the right-of-way, whether it be sidewalks or driveways, it does not change the power or the urgency, not sure what the right word is there, as far as replacement.
Okay.
It's simply giving people the right details and the right specifications for what they're doing.
Okay, because I guess that I would be concerned if we went around with letters saying, "You have to repair your sidewalk this summer," because I think we're still recovering from the repairs from last summer.
Yeah, this doesn't really change anything as far as enforcement.
Okay, and to go just a little bit further, this will be a conversation that we'll be having probably closer towards the end of the year. You've probably seen some individuals in bright yellow shirts with some computer equipment walking around. There's two interns with Bolton and Mink that have been doing sidewalk condition collection all summer, and so, once we have that, then that's when we'll have more targeted areas rather than relying on a complaint-only basis, and so that's when really then you as the council will need to decide where you want to go with that information once we have it.
Thank you.
Any public input? Call for a vote then. Our motion.
Linda Clark, 306 L Second Avenue. I am very appreciative that there's going to be a standard that will be set, because having been a lifetime resident here in Marshalltown, we have a number of areas that do not even have sidewalks at all. We have sidewalks that are varying in size from four feet, three foot, they're all different kinds. I still have my original brick sidewalk, and so I am glad that there's going to be a standard, but I reiterate what she is saying, because we have a lot of city sidewalks that have major cracks and things that need to be repaired as well, but we do need to have a set standard so that someone cannot come in and chop off, my buddy, property owner did, and made it smaller, and mine has been the size it's been since the house was built.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Cahill.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Read number three, please.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award and execution of contract for the South Fourth Avenue Improvement Project, $135,692.
Again, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. Bids were open last week prior to the Fourth of July on the South Fourth Avenue project, which extends from Anson to the south, just to the parking lot where the school bus transfer happens now. Engineer's estimate was roughly $146,000. The low bid was from Brycon at $135,692. We did have five bidders, so we had some fairly good competition, and we'd hope to get this project underway and constructed yet in calendar year 2019. Are there any questions I can answer?
You said this is going to be curb and gutter.
It'll be a new, it'll be a replacement of asphalt street with a new concrete street, including the curb and gutter, yes, sir.
Does that involve storm sewer also, or?
There is no plan for installing storm sewer here.
Any other questions? Any public input? Call for a motion then.
So moved.
I'll second.
Vote, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Would you read Resolution Number Four, please?
Resolution authorizing the purchase of property at 310 Bromley Street.
This is one of the properties that is, was significantly damaged by the tornado and was one where there hadn't been any progress, was still on our list that we were monitoring for our FEMA demolition project, and I was able to reach out to the owner, and they were interested in selling, so this is an agreement to provide for the purchase of the property at $2,000.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
I'll second.
Any public input?
Anna Wolver's, Marshalltown resident. Not in particular to this property, but I do know, like, a month or two ago, there was like a scam going around town that people were claiming to be city officials and trying to buy houses with no time. Is there a, and I know just recently with talk of purchase of some, people were worried about their elderly parents being taken over by part of that scam. Is there a process that people will know for sure going forward as there's more that come up for removal or whatever, demolition, so that people will know it's truly you and not somebody trying to scam them?
Everything went out on City of Marshalltown letterhead with an actual purchase agreement that had the City of Marshalltown on it, so everything referenced the City of Marshalltown and had my contact information on it, so it was legitimate. We made some clarifications on that, but, yeah, it was.
I know there was scare when others were recently approached because of that scam.
Yeah, so this was not a face-to-face approach. That's probably not something we would do. It's more of we would be sending an official notice or official letter on our letterhead, you know, with there being a signature of probably myself or Michelle Spawnheimer.
Good to know. Thank you.
Call for, call for a vote, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Would you read Ernest J., please?
Yes, we have the second reading of ordinance adopting the 2015 building code.
Who's going to, somebody going to talk about that, or?
Well, I was going to say, I don't think there's any discussion to have at this point unless you have any questions. This is the second reading. There would be a third reading at the next meeting with the public hearing on July 22nd.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for a vote, please.
Isom.
Yes.
Lemar.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Would you read number two, please?
Yes, this is the second reading of an ordinance adopting the 2015 fire code.
Good evening, David Ryerson, Marshalltown Fire Department. So apologize, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting when this was brought up, but it's come to my attention that there's some confusion as to this ordinance, and it has to do with open burning. So, once the, once the Code of Ordinances was adopted, I went back and edited this to match up with the chapters and the code sections that are in the new Code of Ordinances. In this document, it does address Chapter 91 under open burning. There was some confusion because within the content of the fire code, it makes reference to open burning, and that was simply there to make reference to the city ordinance on open burning, okay? So there is actually a section in here that amends Chapter 91 on open burning, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have or clarify anything for you.
Questions have come up, Chief, because of the confusion, and part of it, anyway, in that the changes recommended have some opposition, but they're for the safety of all people and the, perhaps a compromise. I'm going to suggest a compromise be added to this in the second reading, and that compromise specifically goes with open burning. The dates may be fine, I don't especially like them, but okay, that's a compromise. The times I don't especially care for, but that's a compromise. I do believe that where there are properties located together, where there is one open burning spot, that with the permission of the owner, four, five, six neighbor, neighbors would come together and do a controlled open burning, and I would like to add to the effect those words to the open burning code.
Okay, so we'd be specifically talking about Section 91.024 under permissible open burning, and that would be subsection, subsection B, where it says property of another is prohibited. So you want to, you want to change that language so, to say that if it's amenable to the property owner and that person has permission, that that type of activity could be, could be grandfathered in, is that, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, with all the other precautions, safety precautions to be taken on that type of burn.
We'd have to make them changes and bring them back.
There'd need to be a motion to make the amendment that Councilmember Martin has referenced in the second, and then a vote on it, and then a vote on the amended ordinance as a whole.
I would move in that direction, to my words in his section.
I think we need a motion for you to make those changes.
I would so move.
Okay.
Second. I guess I'm not opposed, I just, I haven't got Chapter 91 here, so I don't know what all it says. I'd like to, a little bit more detail. Have you guys read that?
They haven't.
That section in open burning?
I was kind of looking. So, it is, it is in the, it is in what is in the packet at like the very bottom on, there's 20 some pages, I believe, and so it's, it starts, I think, on like page 18 or something.
Sorry, that's here.
If you would want to, at this point, you don't feel that you've had enough time to do this, we could, there could be a motion to table this, and then the second reading could occur on July 22nd with the public hearing.
So I guess my question and clarification, maybe this clears it up, I mean, is this specific to rental properties then, where you're having a different inhabitant than the property owner, or what is?
No, it specifically addresses the property owner on his or her property with neighborhood contributions to the burnable debris, following everything else, all the safety procedures, you know, fire suppression.
It does not allow for open, it does not allow for open burning at rental properties. It never has. This is, this is owner, this is owner occupied.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to considering this further. I feel that councils have not had the opportunity to really look at this. I'm not overly opposed to it because it does come down very specifically and does a lot of good compromises to open burning. I don't think we're all familiar, as we should be with it at this point. I still offer my motion. I'm waiting for a second. You can either vote it up or vote it down.
Say we didn't get a second, so.
Do we have to have a second in order to get the more information?
No, the motion.
Right now, there's a motion.
Motion which requires a second.
And the motion is to amend it to allow amenable collaboration between the neighbors to allow open burning in their general area. And how wide of an area are you thinking?
Basically, basically, if I understand him correctly, it would still follow all of the regulations for burning. It's just that if, if you wanted, if you and Counselor Cahill wanted to go together and burn property, or burn vegetation on her property versus yours, you could do that as long as you had her permission. Right now, the way the ordinance is written is you couldn't do that. It has to be on your property. It can't be on the property of another.
So basically, if your neighbor has a fire going, you could say, hey, can I bring this over and put it in? Is that?
Yes.
The understanding of it?
That's, that's the direction he's going, yes.
And currently, the current language prohibits that. They want us each to have our own fire.
Correct. It said, the way that, the way that's written right now, it says it's on, on your property, not the property of another.
I will second the motion with more information.
Okay.
I'd like to see the wording side by side, if we could do that for the next.
Did, did our old rules say that they couldn't burn on Saturday afternoon or on any of Sunday?
It was from noon on, noon, afternoon on Saturday and not at all on Sunday.
Changed. Boy, that's tough, to know it's now changed.
No, that's what it says in here?
What you're looking at is what's currently in effect.
That's, that's what is existing.
What does the new code say?
The new code says that, hold on a second. It would be, burning, open burning would be allowed between the dates of April 1st through June 30th and October 1st through November 30th, and then open, open burning shall occur in the backyard Monday through Sunday between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. and is limited to single-family dwellings only. And then no burning on, no burning on the holidays, Good Friday, Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day.
And the changes on Saturday, Sunday? I'm not completely understanding.
They would be able to burn, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. on Saturdays and Sundays.
Do you know that, fellow councilors?
Yes. That's fine. So, so what's, so what's written in here is nothing different than what we discussed back in, it was either late fall or early, early this year that we discussed when we talked about open burning. So, because I came in and asked the council for some direction on which way to go. And this is what I proposed then, and I didn't hear any objections, so that this is exactly the wording that I brought to you back then.
You did, however, field the question, I think our city administrator did, as to what changes were proposed and so on, did you not?
Yeah, yeah, the big, the big changes I've gone, I've gone over. The other thing, the other thing that this, that this ordinance does is it provides definition of outdoor fireplaces, so that if somebody wants to have an outdoor fireplace, the old code did not recognize that. This code does. So if somebody has an outdoor fireplace, you know, something, it is designed to have a recreational fire, that they can do that and that it addresses that in this code.
So we have a motion and a second, or Bill's motion?
So Bill's motion was to allow neighbors to collaborate, and it was seconded by Susan Cahill. And then Sue added a condition that it be discussed again at the next meeting.
So I, I think to understand if you're moving forward with an amendment now, that would appear for the third reading on July 22nd with the public hearing, with the amended language that you would be voting on. So voting in the affirmative to this motion will result in the changed language coming back for the final reading in the public hearing on July 22nd.
I can live with that.
Is there any public input?
Sarah Rosenbloom, 1512 Kalson Boulevard. I live in the northwest part of the city in an old neighborhood with small lots, and I work, and frankly, I'm disappointed. I can't keep my windows open in the spring or the fall, because if I come home, my house smells like smoke. And I'm, don't, I feel very uncomfortable with this amenable neighbor thing. Does that mean that my neighbor can, all my other neighbors can go to the neighbor next door and burn all day long? I, I don't know. I'm just very uncomfortable with this. I, I feel like this is, you know, I understand burning is a very touchy subject, but I feel like, you know, it really impedes on my, you know, my life, my home and the fact that I can't even leave my windows open on a nice day, because I'm not home. I'm, I'm working all day. That's just my comment.
Well, just to tag on to that, if you remember my comments, my comments were no matter, no matter what happens or how it changes, there's somebody that's not going to be happy with it. So I tried to accommodate everybody's, as much as possible, their desires and their wishes, so that for those that still wanted to be able to burn their yard waste, they could do it. For those that had health conditions, you know, we, we took out the part of the year that's really bad for them. We took that out. And then November through March, nobody's really burning anyway. So I, I tried my best to craft something that would, that would hopefully accommodate everybody. Now, I guess that's your decision whether I did a good job or not.
We have a motion and a second. We call for a vote then.
Motion on the amendment. Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Now we would still need to do the second reading as amended.
Move to approve, move to approve the second reading as amended. I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Would you read ordinance number three?
We have ordinance providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property in Amendment Number Seven to Urban Renewal Plan for Urban Renewal Area Number Three, second reading.
This is the second reading to basically add area into the urban renewal area number three, which was discussed and previously approved as the area behind Walmart, the land behind Walmart, and then basically from 12th Street along Iowa Avenue to city limits. And so that's the area that is still part of this.
Any public input?
This is the one-
Or you got a question?
This is the one we heard from the county?
Um, yes.
That they were very opposed to it?
Yeah, so, so basically, at the last meeting, you adopted the plan that showed the area as amended, but then there, because it is an ordinance that establishes those areas, there's the three readings that we need to go through for that.
Okay, thanks.
Public input? Now we need a motion and to approve that second reading.
So move.
I'll second.
Call for a vote, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Number one.
Request to dispose of 108 North Seventh Avenue.
So this is a property that we came into following a, it became a county-held tax certificate, but it ended up being one of the first properties that we did demolish. And so by getting it into our own hands, we were able to wipe out any liens on it and then now have the ability to convey this. And so I'll pull up kind of the, the map here at the bottom of the, on the assessor's information, just to show you. It is a fairly small lot located in the older part of town. There is located on an alley. The adjacent neighbor at 110, which is here to the north, is interested in purchasing it, and naturally, they would be probably the only party that would have an interest in this. But we still have the reason to advertise and let people know that we'd be accepting sealed bids. I included a draft of what that would look like in here, in your packet. And so this would be something, if you're ready to dispose of it, I'd be looking for a motion to direct me to issue the request for bid on 108 North Seventh Avenue.
You bet. Get it back on the tax roll.
So are you making a motion then?
So move.
I will second that motion.
Any public input? I'd call for a vote, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lemur?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sidewalk Gap Project Year Number Two.
Okay, so it was, really, it was actually a year ago that we reviewed this list that I just pulled up in front of you and talked about, you know, some of these gaps that we had discussed and we talked to the public about and filling those. So, Project Year One, we have borrowed the money for it. We did that back in December, and we are underway. There's, CGA is under contract to do this. They're still working on easement acquisition to basically make that happen. So I don't really want to focus too much on Year One because there's not a great update to provide at this point, but we will be talking about it again in the near future. So you can see that Year Two actually has three different areas around Fisher Elementary, South Ridge. There's a few different areas, Sixth Street and Wakanda, as well as then Center Street. There's a gap that is there as well. And then looking at Anson Elementary, the, on South Street, the north side of South Street from Seventh Avenue to 12th Avenue. So last year, when we were cost estimating, that was about $544,000. I would assume for inflation, we're probably looking at 550-plus at this point. But the, the question that we wanted to ask tonight was, are you ready to give us the direction at this point to move forward with this for project planning and borrowing purposes or budgeting purposes, if there's a way we can fit it in other places? Or is this something you would like to revisit this entire list?
What's the timeline look like if we were to say yes? I mean, if we were to say yes to this project, I mean, is that at least six months from now, is that?
We would be looking at putting it in our, probably in our fall 2019 borrowing, so that we would have the cash on hand for it to be constructed in 2020. It's probably a bigger question at this point of whether or not the parts of this can be internally designed, since we do have some staffing back in the engineering department, or if there would be parts of this that would likely involve easement acquisition, again, that we would want to then, you know, farm out on things. So we don't really have sort of that engineering scope developed, but that would sort of be the next step of start looking at it, as well as then preparing to include that in our upcoming borrowing.
And so I guess my second question then would be, how does this list change with everything that has happened? Because the scope of work has probably changed in those areas or certain areas of town with regards to tornado damage and everything else. I mean, has this list changed? Do we want it to change and include additional portions of that? I mean, back to the original comment on sidewalks, as we go through this list, I don't know how much of it will change on, on some areas, but.
Yeah, so I don't know that there really would be significant change. It would probably be where there were residential properties that were demolished and they tore out the sidewalk as part of that demolition. So I don't know that we have a grasp on what that looks like. I, I can say, and I mentioned it before, that, you know, at the end of, towards the end of the calendar year, we're gonna get a whole lot of data on sidewalks that we don't have right now. And so, but most of that's going to be condition. I think there will be some, is Greg still here? I think we'll, we'll have sort of a visual map with, with that as well, correct?
Yeah.
If you don't mind talking about that.
Greg Brissard with Bolton Make. So we're working on the ADA Transition Plan. So you'll end up by the end of the year, getting a map, kind of documenting these gaps, other gaps we found throughout town. Our survey, our interns started in late May, so it'll be from late May on. So any sidewalk that's been removed prior to May, we'll, we'll keep track of. So we'll be able to see any, we'll be able to, we could compare this list, make sure it's still active at that point, plan for future years, and we'll also be able to tell you the condition of your existing sidewalks and where, what they're in too. And it'll all be on a visual, nice map. If, if I, if I could throw it up, I would right now. If you're interested afterwards, I do have it too, so you can see it too.
I, I think the bigger thing right now is just, you know, delaying until we probably have that information, the November timeframe. That's gonna be something we then, unless you wanted to just include a general amount for sidewalks in our borrowing, we could certainly do that without having a scope of work with it at that point in time. Just saying that we'd be doing X amount of dollars worth of sidewalk work. I think there is probably a conversation for you all to have of, you know, at this point in time, the property owner is responsible for any sidewalk, existing sidewalk adjacent to their property. And so if there's going to be a, a city, you know, funded sidewalk replacement program, that's going to be something that looks a little bit different and needs to have probably a broader conversation about one area of town versus another area of town.
I, I, I don't have a problem with this. I just, I wish we didn't have to bond it. I wish there was, there was some way that maybe we wait, we put it in, but we don't go out and sell bonds yet for it, that we put it in our, our budget and see if we could fit it in some way with, even if we could only fit half of it in, without having to go out and float another bond for it. I know that bonding is easy, but at the same time, I would like, like it if we could do a little bit more out of cash flow.
And, and that's certainly what we would look at. You know, one of the things I'd mentioned at a previous meeting was just how the, the Highway 14, Center Street improvements had come in under budget significantly. So that was gonna change what our three-year repayment to the DOT looked like. And so we'll, we'll look at all of those things and try and see if there's a way that road use tax could do that. You all always have the option too of local option sales tax, the council-designated portion. You know, that's a finite amount of money, but you know, that's certainly another source that could be looked at for something as well.
Especially for a one-time deal. I hate to use road use tax. I want him to fix some streets.
I do think that the priorities, the fact that these three in the Year Two are near the schools, I, I do think that that does, can continue to be a priority for us in, in my mind, that we should certainly keep those on the top of the list.
Yep, I agree.
Any kind of motion to progress?
I'm, I'm good with that right now, and we'll just kind of have it on the list. And as we start working on what are those other potential projects, then we'll, we'll keep it there. Ultimately, that'll all come back to you to review before we start moving forward with any of the steps in borrowing.
Let's move on to number three then.
I think we have a public comment.
Excuse me, yes.
Thank you. Mark Eaton, 1007 South Tenth Avenue. I'm aware that the state has alternative transportation grants that can be used for sidewalks. We've used them in the past for building trails, and we should be using them for building sidewalks. That would eliminate having to bond some funds, and that needs to be seriously looked at, and Region Six knows what they're doing with that, so maybe they can get involved. Thanks.
Good idea.
Let's move on to number three discussion then.
South Seventh Avenue Project Update.
So Counselor Martin was looking for an update on where we stood on South Seventh Avenue, just south of South Ridge Road. And so on the monitor is a preliminary concept from Clapseton and Garber. The council may remember that the city purchased the strip of land east of Timber Creek Park, west of Governor Road, north of the, the current subdivision. And so this is a concept to lay out, what do we have, nine, nine lots, nine buildable lots, and then the, make the extension of South Seventh Avenue to South Ridge Road. Currently, CGA is working on finalizing the plat, which is really the first step that we need to establish the right of way where the road can be built. Rest assured that they are working in parallel for the design of the road. We anticipate that this project could be let this fall, with the possibility that construction could happen this fall. Even if we are to get started on the construction of Seventh Avenue this fall, I do believe that it would extend in the next spring, and whether depending, it, all of the construction may occur in the spring of 2020. Can I answer any questions?
I have one. Lots three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine, the, the depth of the lot, it, it shows the, the width, but nowhere, nowhere does it show the depth.
Yes, and obviously, without measuring, I couldn't tell you the answer, but I mean, we can, I wanna say they're in the order of a hundred, 120?
Yeah.
They're not as deep maybe as we would like, but they certainly are buildable, yeah.
I, I think you're right on 120, yeah.
Okay, so you think they're 120 feet deep? We, Jessica and I had a conversation today I, and it was, I was wondering if, when we did this subdivision, if we could make sure that maybe we incorporate some of the- this subdivision, if we could make sure that maybe we incorporate some of the requirements that Kester subdivision has so that we, we don't take a really nice subdivision and put some cheap houses along the edges of it. And she said she would like to see us sell this subdivision and let somebody else do it and put those requirements in. But the more I thought about that, I thought, I still want some kind of assurance to the people along Kester Road there that we're not going to put a thousand-foot, you know, house in there. I think we, we need to, when we sell the piece of property, I hope we can put some kind of restrictions on the sale of the property so that we, we don't damage what's already there and maybe add to it. And I understand her point that those are pretty expensive houses that maybe we, they won't be able to sell them, but at least we could make sure that those houses are not, I don't want to say downgrade, but aren't too small so they, they hinder the subdivision that's already there that's been developed. And that's my only comment. I'd like to see this thing done tomorrow.
So I assume I can do the same thing with other city park property with regards to a request for proposal rather than just if you wanted to do something along those lines? Would that be true?
So what we've kind of talked about is, I mean, the thing to make clear here is the city is not going to be the developer of these properties and that we don't want to sell them off individually and potentially be left with a, a lot that might be less desirable than one. And so when, when we were basically to the point of having everything completed in a final plat, that we would basically come back to you with the recommendation to probably list with a real estate agent, everything, basically lots one through nine, hopefully we'll be able to do something with 10 and 11, an adjacent property owner, since those are not buildable. But if not, then bundle those in as well so that our transaction is one transaction that basically is, is swift and easy. And then that, that purchaser would then have the responsibility for the development. I should note on this, it's kind of very small in the language, but one of the things that Councilmember Lamer and I had talked about is that with this, we're going to be rezoning. That is currently zoned to allow for duplexes and that was something that we felt didn't fit the character of the existing neighborhood. And so we would be rezoning from an R2A to an R2 to remove that allowance, which would, I mean, that would just be creating a higher density next to what is a very nice neighborhood with some very large homes and, and things. So that was the, the compromise that we felt was probably the best thing to do with that. And so if, I, I think the thing that I would encourage you to think about, not that you have to think about it right now, but the more restrictions you place on this is how willing are we going to be to find a buyer for it? And I think our end goal was to find a buyer for it so that we could have new housing developed. So not anything that needs to be decided tonight or, you know, anything like that, but that's certainly something to, to think about with this of, you know, how long are you willing to hold property as the owners of it if, if that's an impediment to development?
I, I heard that a couple of property owners were interested in 10 and 11 just to extend their property because they knew they were unbuildable, so they figured they could buy them cheap. And I said, there's nothing cheap.
Yeah. So that's, that's a conversation we'll have to have kind of as we get to the point where we can actually start, you know, selling some property.
Okay.
And if I recall, our main purpose for buying this was to provide the extension of the road to South Ridge. And so I would not want to put a lot of restrictions on it. I think that we have done, we have gone above and beyond to provide that outlet when the developer of the current subdivision wasn't willing to put that in. Is that correct? I mean, that's where we got to where we're at.
He couldn't put it in.
Without buying the land.
Well, the land, the guy that owned the land wouldn't sell it to him, so he couldn't, he could not install it.
There, there is a benefit that is being provided to the entire neighborhood by the city putting in the expansion.
Yes, the neighborhood is getting it. But again, I think that, and, and again, I think that yes, we want nice housing, but we also want affordable housing in our area. That seems to be where we lack housing. We don't need a lot of $250,000 houses out there. We need some more $100,000 houses and $150,000 houses so that people can have them, have a, a place that they can live and call their own. So I do think that there's, we need to be careful about any restrictions that we put on there.
Okay.
I would also comment that part of the reason that we did this was for a safe neighborhood. There are over 60 properties that have one egress.
Right, right.
And there are no other in town like that. I just have a further question, Justin, for you. The future of 7th Avenue, South 7th Avenue is still in the development or conceptual stage?
As to this piece or other pieces?
Other pieces.
Uh, yeah, it, there really aren't any, I, I guess there's some connectivity plans out there with a line drawn on a map, but there's no one out there plotting out the right of way and the, and the path that 7th Avenue would take. We may have some additional information when we get the East Merrill Hibbs Plan.
I noticed that after we approved to go ahead and start working on that East Merrill Hibbs Boulevard plan, that the piece of property that it goes through automatically went up for sale.
It, it was something that they were intending to list before we approved the agreement, but yes.
And it's listed rather high.
Any other questions I can answer?
No, thank you.
Is there any public, public input on this one? Well, these will all be on the next meeting.
Nope. There's nothing further for South 7th Avenue at this point in time until CGA really has their work done.
Well, that brings us up to the public comment section. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the microphone, state his name, address. Comments shall be limited to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and the council as a whole. The mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public. And no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with open meeting laws. So if there's any, any public comments, double.
And a Wolver's Marshalltown resident, I have two different topics, kind of an extension of the South 7th, but I live on South 3rd Avenue on the bendy corner there. And I noticed a couple of weeks ago, driving by Lenahan, there's like the radar speed trap thing. You guys would get the city out of bankruptcy if you would put a radar on South 3rd Avenue. People fly by there about 50 miles an hour every day, all day. In fact, my neighbors have lost their garage because people fly by there. And so that's just an idea for safety increment there. As a foster mom, I would love that. And the second thing, again, social media, a friend of mine that works for MCC and has been taping some of the council meetings, I guess, was told that in like a month or so, that will be discontinued. And as a public citizen that wants to know what's going on and speak informed about things when others ask, that isn't always able to make it to meetings due to school functions or conferences or kids' sports or whatever, I think that's an invaluable thing to the citizens of Marshalltown. You guys want us to increase participation and you want to hear from us. And it's good just to go back and reference when things come up for a second, third reading, you know, two years later, just so that we know what you're talking about when it comes to ordinances. So I would strongly consider that you continue that practice. Thank you.
I live on 1406 West Boone Street and I'm very new to Marshalltown. We purchased our home in January of this year and I received a parking ticket for parking in my lawn. I didn't know it was a city ordinance, so my, I'm just here, I'm going to pay the ticket. I've already spoken to, the officer gave it to me, Officer, or Chief Tupper. And I'm just wondering how we can let new members of the community know about these types of city ordinances, whether or not real estate agents could recommend that we, you know, learn the parking, what the parking situation is. I've gone to the housing department and I've asked them if I could put gravel down to like fix the problem, but I can't do that. I can't, and I also can't put gravel on the other side of my house because I have to have so many feet on either side of my home according to ordinances that have come to pass, I don't know when. And I feel like there's not a lot I can do with my property and having moved here because a large company, you know, requested my husband to come here, so our whole family relocated and I'd like to be a part of this community and trying really hard to want to stay here and buy another home when the time comes to sell this home in the city of Marshalltown. But I don't feel like there's anything I can do to my home with these said ordinances. And I, and there's also no sign at the end of my street saying what side of the street you can park on because it was taken out by a car, I don't know how many years ago. And I surveyed all of the neighbors in my end of the street on West Boone Street and only two of them knew of the city ordinance to not park in the grass in front of your house. So I don't think it's something that people know about as much as it has been publicized and newspapers are on social media, but I don't participate in social media and the newspaper, I could get the newspaper. There are lots of things that I can do to be better and I follow the rules and I want to be a good member of the community. So I just want to find ways to make us all aware of what we need to do when it comes to these ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Welcome to town.
Sure, anybody else? If not, we'll stand adjourned. Oh, excuse me, you got something?
Nope. Go right ahead. I was just going to let the council know that, that we had a conversation this afternoon about new buildings going in downtown and it's going to be on a discussion item at our next council meeting and we're going to get all the extra information that we don't have. A really nice conversation this afternoon about that and I, I, I thought it'd be nice that the council just had a long-term conversation about, we know how we're taking care of the rehab buildings, but we need to do something to help the new buildings and, and Jennifer.
Jessica.
She was more than willing to put together what was available locally, state and that kind of stuff so we could have a really nice discussion at our next meeting about that kind of stuff. Cause I think we all need to know what's available out there for, cause I've been asked questions and I, I don't know. And I'd like to know. So I, I just wanted to let everybody know we're going to do that, which I think is really neat.
So, so now we're adjourned.
Okay. Thank you.